August 28th, council meeting, I'm sorry, work session for Foxfire Village. Let the record show that all council members are present as well as members in the audience. Thank you for attending. It's nice to see you. Starting out with any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I'll just mention something. Guardian football courts, if that's okay.
You're not on here at all, so I will put you after Councilman Gilroy, okay?
Okay.
Any other changes? No? Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as a change?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None being? Okay, I'm gonna start off with the NC DIT, which is the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, phone changes. We were notified on August 5th that our phone service provider, which is the NC State, is being discontinued at the end of the year. And we need to get a new phone. They're switching from analog to digital. And Lisa did get a quote from the people that do our current phone system. And I have not, I do wanna do more research on this because I wanna get some more information as far as options available to us. His quote, to give us new phones, because our phones are analog. But I've also been reading that there are certain things that we don't have to get new phones. So I've got to do a little bit more research on that. But we're looking at around $5,100 just to get new phones, hook up the police, get the police the same system that we have. There was some comment in here that if they use a Husey antenna, that they could, the police department could possibly be using our internet connection as well. So we could maybe delete one of our internet connections over at the police.
Okay, 'cause they're on spectrum.
Right, and I think they have more than one yet. So we have to look at all of that, but I am going to, and if anyone wants to assist me in this.
I will.
I am going to do some research on options and see if we can get a couple other quotes and understand completely what's going on here.
Now, that quote is for the phone and the service of the year?
Yes, it's, no. Monthly, the monthly reoccurring charge, as I see it on here, is gonna be about $210 a month.
Which is less than what we pay now.
What we pay now is not inexpensive, if you ask me.
No, it's not. I mean, when I sign the phone check, I go, I wonder what we're getting.
Right. It's just for the equipment. The non-reoccurring charges, which includes the installation and setup, 10 new phones, and point-to-point antenna to go between this building and that building. It's $5,100.
So you mentioned about the terminations at the end of this year?
Yes.
Yeah, they're giving us a whole lot of time to figure this out.
I was gonna say, there's not a lot of lead time, is there?
No, no. So anyway.
And when they say termination, they're just cut away at that point, or they gradually phased out?
What happens is, is that if you don't get off the analog system, you now have to pay some sort of tariff charges because of the copper wire technology. And it could increase our bill by 300%.
Wow.
Oh, let's don't do that.
Right. So that's something we need to, number one, we didn't budget for it, we weren't aware of it. So once we do figure out, and we have to do this rather quickly because everyone who's using NC DIT, which I think a lot of municipalities are, are doing the same thing.
So after the initial installation, nearly paid you like $25,000 a year?
I think, as I understand it, but.
It's just less than what we're paying now.
Yes, yes. And there again, we have no choice. We've gotta do something. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying that we've gotta do it, we've gotta do it quickly. And also, I read, I've been doing a little literature. I read that municipal phone lines cannot just be, phone numbers cannot be transferred very quickly without special permission. So you've gotta get somehow special permission to transfer the numbers from whatever service you're on to your other service.
So we don't wanna keep changing the phone numbers.
Well, we don't wanna change, yeah, we don't wanna change your phone number, but we have to get special permission to do so.
Not if I'm paying also.
I think it's the state, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
He said it in here, didn't he? I think it's in there.
I read it, I've been reading so much stuff and I can't remember exactly. I could've gotten it from going to their website, or going to a website to figure out what was going on here. I think I went to NC DIT, to tell you the truth. And they said that you've gotta fill out a special request to transfer the numbers.
Just don't make it easy.
So that's that. Next thing is the GoGo, which is a possible replacement for CodeRed. CodeRed, which is our emergency broadcast messaging system, is, I guess, cumbersome to use.
Yes.
It's also, I know, I personally, ever since I got rid of my landline, I don't get CodeReds anymore. I can't get them on my phone, I can't.
You don't have them on your cellphone?
Can't get them on my phone, and I can't get them, I do.
I get them, I was gonna say, I get them on myself.
I think it's, I think it has something to do with my phone provider, but it shouldn't matter. And anyone should be able to get them. This Go.gov is a much more user-friendly application for basically the same thing. It's a broadcasting, people just have to sign up, just like they do for CodeRed. You can get email, text, or voice messages. And it is more expensive than Unsolved Right Now, which is our CodeRed. It's $3,600 a year.
Actually, we only have to bill $3,200 this year.
I saw the $36,1205 is what our payment was, probably with taxes perhaps, I don't know.
That's our old rate, that's our old.
That's our current rate.
Yeah.
And we're, right now, we're subscribed, that's for through May of next year. I don't know if we can delete it and get a replacement, or get a refund of any sort. And I'm not saying that we need to do this, you know, until our contract is on. But I wanna do some research on this as well. It is a little more expensive. It will be $4,400 a year, but if it's easier to use, 'cause right now Lisa is the only one, well, I think Jesse uses it as well.
Jesse uses it water formally, yes, he does.
But it's, it is a little cumbersome to use. And, again.
That's only $800 more.
Yeah. If it's easier and if the people are, if they, it might behoove us to change.
Would everybody have to re-sign up again then?
Yes, yes, yes.
We'd have to get that out.
And also, we would own all the information. Right now, we can't get into CodeRed to see who's, you know, 'cause people will call and say, I keep getting CodeRed notifications and I don't even live in Foxfire anymore. And Lisa can't, she can't go in and delete it. They have to go in and delete it if they can even remember their passwords. And anything that I've tried to change in CodeRed is not working.
I think you know there was a password for it.
And I've even downloaded the app and it still is not working.
Have you? I've never used a password.
No, it rings at my house, it rings on my cellphone, I've never.
Well, if you set it up using, if you've never made any changes since you set it up.
Never set it up. I just signed up for it through the office.
Yeah.
And that was it. It just, I download, I didn't download anything.
Right. Or you don't, you're not, you don't have to. I did, because I couldn't get, I couldn't get any notices. Like I said, I used to get them on my landline, but anyway. So that's another thing that I am looking into and doing research on to see if it makes sense. Just wanted to let people know about that.
Okay.
Okay, changing from a .com to a .gov domain. Lisa's been doing some research on this and actually, the security levels on the .gov website are much more, well, it's much more secure. And there are certain emails that she has to jump through hoops to get at the state level because they won't even email to .com. So, and that, for them to change, it's gonna be $350 basically to change this.
Yeah, I think we should do it.
I think we just need to do that.
Just do that.
Somebody made the point too, that it's very clear when you're on the official Foxfire website and there's no,
Yep.
you know, there's no question. I think, I think we should just make a motion to do that and get it done.
I agree.
Make the motion, or just?
I think we do.
Um, I think, let me just get, um.
Let's just decide.
Do we wanna wait for a council meeting to know?
No.
No?
No.
I read this, I was, this is such a no-brainer.
It is.
I think it just sets us as, this is the village website. And if the security's better, I think the sooner we do it.
And I was always wondering why it was never .gov.
Right.
I mean, we don't.
Okay, could you make your motion again?
I'll make a motion, we switch from .com to .gov.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None being? That will occur. I will let Lisa know when she gets back to get that done. Lisa's on vacation for, for the September something.
She's gone until middle of, uh.
Yes.
September.
September.
Yeah.
Yes, so that's, that's that. Oh, and we will also obviously keep our .com, we will have to pay for that domain, you know, forever, because we don't want that to just get out.
No, yeah, but that's through GoDaddy, right?
It is, and I.
That's probably about 20 bucks a month, 20 bucks a year. That shouldn't be very much. You just, you just, all you'd have to do is retain the name.
Yeah, we just, we're just gonna buy that domain and keep buying the domain.
I have a handful of those and they're not pricey.
Okay, the FPOA Christmas event. If you recall, I don't know if you asked me.
I do.
I don't.
But I do.
I don't.
Mary and Warren, Mary and Warren are on the, you're the council leads for the Christmas event.
Correct.
So.
Warren's thinking, I'm not gonna be on the council by the time we do the event.
No, but you'll be.
And, and okay, we're, no, December, January, we're gone.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that the tree lighting is December 7th.
Okay.
But the planning is obviously before.
Before.
So, anyway.
Listen, if Warren's gonna stiff me, I need some, and I don't mean that badly, but I need somebody else.
Yes.
But the thing is, is that we need to start working with Sally and the FPOA.
Yep.
Because I do wanna make it a nice.
They make it pretty easy.
Community, oh, they do.
Yeah, they've got a whole spreadsheet of everything, they go through it, it's very easy.
But I think we want to do a little more as well, you know? Maybe have more lighting and, you know, maybe more participation, community-wide.
Yeah, I'm not volunteering, I'm not gonna go out.
More hot chocolate, right?
Well, those.
Your turn.
For Mary's sake.
What?
Your turn.
I'm gone.
Do we, do we have any volunteers?
Where are you going? All right.
I'll be gone.
Let's just say.
What's Sally's last name?
Conlon.
Conlon.
C-U-N.
Eliadep.
And.
I'll get with her.
Their sub-lead is Laura, and I don't know who Laura is.
But.
And the lead, the lead is Jen S.
I don't have Jen.
Sally can tell us who it is. But anyway, I think we.
Jen S?
Jen S.
Okay, unidentified last name as an S, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like to remind the council members involved in that that the event will be here before we know it. And if we wanna do anything special, we need to probably put things in place.
And just send you Sally's info.
Thank you.
And if you need any help, Mary,
I'll need help.
that you're not getting from anyone else.
Yeah, I'd like, I really, excuse myself.
If I'm a hero.
I can't honestly say that I'm gonna be much help. I've got a couple other things that I'm really gonna try to focus on.
Okay.
And then we're gone.
I've organized huge events before, so I.
Wait, 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 can I mark it on the calendar? Don actually volunteered for something? Wait, all right.
I'm a hero.
Let's move on.
Let me ask a question though, we said that we would put some village money toward that. We didn't identify an amount, we didn't put in the budget, but, but we said we would.
We have miscellaneous funds, or, I don't see it, I mean, I'm thinking maybe a little bit more music, or maybe, you know?
I think a little more music, I think a little more.
Maybe more fun, fun things to do, or whatever.
Again, I'm not volunteering.
Just, and I think that FPOA has great ideas. And if they have, you know, we want, again, more music, or whatever, more snacks and.
More food.
More food.
Yeah, 'cause they have, for contests. That bring, that make cookies, so they always have a load of cookies in the police station. And they do a great job with that.
They do, they've always done a good job in the past, I think we're mostly helping financially.
Say what?
Was there Santa there last year?
No, not at the tree lighting. It was at the fire, the clubhouse.
I might see.
And then they did the parade.
Yeah, but that was the fire department that did that separately.
I'll find a Santa. Hello, Tom McClellan.
Okay.
He owes me.
You're gonna have to write to the North Pole.
Moving on.
Okay, next.
We have.
Wex card?
Wex card, yes, that's for our employees purchasing gas. We have, the fuel cards were received. So we now have a fuel account only for Wex Bank where they, you can, oh, and it's a universal card. The problem we had before that it was an Exxon.
Yeah.
So we had to get a, yeah, we had to get a.
This saves Shannon a lot of work.
Right.
Because it takes care of all the tax stuff and we didn't have to do that, and that's huge.
Oh, good, that's big.
Well, it's taken care of then.
Yes.
Well, it's not taken care of in that the cards have been distributed, but Lisa gave me the cards today. So I'll get with everyone who gets a card, clearly explain, this is for gas only.
Well, it'll reject.
Well, that's good.
It won't even.
But, but also emphasize that please don't use your first bank card for gas now, because this is how we have the Wex card.
Right.
And then everybody signs for them, and so I'll get those distributed.
Yes, okay. Last two things is something I wanna bring up because it's coming up quickly, is the 250th anniversary, or celebration for the United States. And I was wondering if we wanted to get a citizen participation group together, just an ad hoc committee, to work on any special events that we as a village might wanna plan.
That's a good idea, I was thinking about that, 'cause we don't have, we're gonna make much better input if we involve people from the community.
Yeah.
I would be all for that.
Yeah, so I think I'm gonna have, when Lisa gets back, I'm gonna have her put an announcement out. And we'll just keep mentioning it, that we would love to have a citizen participation group of, doesn't have to be a lot of people, but, or anyone can just send in some recommendations to the website. You know, on the report of concern, or send an email to Lisa. Or myself, regarding any ideas they have for a 250th celebration.
Sounds good.
And then I wanna do the same thing, Foxfire is going to be celebrating 50 years in 2027. The technical date, I think, is April 11th. But I think we should have a big celebration for that, and I also wanna get community input on that. Maybe get together and create, you know, historical. We have a lot of historical documents that a group could go through.
We got a lot of stuff from the county that had some of that stuff.
And I think it's important for people to understand the history of Foxfire. Maybe you can go back a little bit before Foxfire even existed. And just so people can get a little bit more understanding of the history of the area and the history of the town.
Probably work with the golf course and that too, because they were one of the first things here.
Right. Well, and the one thing too, I was talking to Lisa is about, is if we could get some longstanding residents. I don't know if anyone's been here for 50 years.
I haven't died.
But if.
Have, a longstanding.
Yeah, or.
I've been here 16 years and I'm 82.
Yeah, well, that's because you came here.
You came late then.
But, you know, people who've been here 30 years, 40 years, I'm sure there's some people here that have been here for a long time.
The Hesses.
That can really.
Who?
Magenmares. And maybe get some stories, some personal stories.
Jackass?
No.
You mean like when the clubhouse, there's really a clubhouse?
I think it was the 70s they got down there.
Yeah.
And the Siegler's, you know, Mike and Jenny, they were here when they were kids, they were in their 70s.
Siegler's was 2000, 2006 they got there.
Yeah, but they were down there a lot soon.
Yeah, they have, they have, yeah.
So anyways, I wanna get a, again, that's another citizen participation group, or at least, yeah, a group to help us pull together information, as well as gather stories and testimonials from people who wanna share their experiences in the, in the community over, and how it's changed. And, you know, the better for the worse, 'cause I'm sure there's a little bit of both in there.
That one, we don't have to worry about setting up now, though, do we?
I would like to, because there's a lot of stuff to, I think we did, 'cause it's gonna be here before you know it. And, you know, do we wanna get banners, do we wanna, you know, do anything? I think it's important to.
You mean it goes across the street?
I would love to do something like that, but I don't know if we can, 'cause it's a state road.
Yeah.
But anyway.
We could always ask, the problem is the height of them.
Yeah.
Have to be, especially with all the trucks.
18 feet high.
If not higher, yeah, I don't know.
I don't think they'd allow us, just because of the height.
There might be some.
They just strip the road.
Oh, boy. So anyway, another thing that I think it would be.
We could just go on.
A great thing for citizen participation. And it should be something that's celebrated.
Well, we could have a banner like in front on the village hall somewhere along the road, but not going across the road.
Right. Maybe across the fence or something, yeah.
That would be nice.
So those are two citizen participation media groups that I would love to get together. And we're gonna start now, because as we know, it takes time. And people could, you know, circle off and on those committees as well, so. So that's another thing that I'm going to be working on and hopefully organizing, and hopefully we'll get some participation on that. And that, unless anyone has questions for me, is what I've been working on.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Councilmember Gilroy.
Delinquent property taxes. I got up with the Keis Law, who is probably the major player in that arena in the state. And they came back to me and two of the parcels, Laurel and Norshamra, already foreclosed on. So they'll be getting with, and I'll touch base with the tax collector, Gary Briggs, to be sure that this works. But they'll be going to our attorney to be sure that we get our settlements.
Who foreclosed on it?
County.
Even, now, what about?
I need to go back, I mean, they foreclosed, that, those properties haven't been paying either Foxfire taxes or county taxes.
Okay.
So that's why they foreclosed.
Okay.
Okay? Bobalink, which is on the corner of Foxfire and Bobalink. The county doesn't have that one yet, and so I will get with them about starting that, because that one's also been delinquent probably for 10, 12 years, easy. And then Eagle Drive is getting ready to be filed for delinquency.
Now.
For foreclosure.
Are they, are they, is there a difference how they treat when the county was collecting taxes versus when we were collecting taxes?
I don't know, and I'm gonna find out, because one of the things he said is that the county won't collect any assessments. And I'm not sure, they can't collect ours for when the county wasn't doing our taxes.
Right, so how do we get our?
That's when we get Hornick involved.
Okay, well, we need to get him in.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely. Okay, so we got that. And then I wrote a purchase order.
I'm sorry. Once the foreclosed, are they then going to put these lots up for sale?
That's, that's what it sounds like, and I'm gonna find that out too. I mean, once they're foreclosed on, they go to, they go to sale.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's how they're.
Are they empty lots?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all empty, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's why I've always done it, is go to do it.
Now, which one is it on Bobalink, as you're going east on Bobalink? Is it the one on the right?
It's the corner.
Or the one on the left?
It's the one on.
Foxfire, Foxfire Boulevard?
It's the one on the, on the right. If I was coming down Bobalink from my house and headed toward the golf course, it's the one on the right-hand side on the corner.
Okay, you know, somehow, that's not a buildable lot, there's something wrong with that.
There is something, and I agree with you, because the people who live next door, Cantinas, were gonna buy it.
Yes.
And they didn't go because it's not, there is something wrong, there's something wrong with it.
There was a builder that had it cleared about a year ago.
No.
No, no, not that one.
No, no, not that one.
No.
No.
I know which one you're talking, yeah, because the girl who lives next door to it sold it. Sheila, we know Sheila, okay. And then somebody was going to buy it, and then something happened that they found out there was something wrong with the property.
There's something wrong.
Well, what I'm thinking about is that sewer from the condos comes down there, you do that lot line.
That might have something to do with it.
Yeah, the sewer, the drain field is right in there in that property.
Is that it?
So they had to stop.
Okay, yeah, but there, I don't think there.
Well, okay, but anyway, sorry.
All right.
I will track that down with Gary Briggs, and I'll get with Lisa so that we get to Hornick, so we get what we're supposed to get. And those will be the, those are the three, four major.
Can it wait until Lisa gets back, or should you talk to Hornick now?
I'm gonna talk to Briggs first and find out.
Okay.
Briggs, the county tax collector, and if I need to go to Hornick, I'll just let you know and move it so we get.
Yeah.
'Cause I, the email I got didn't say how far they are in the foreclosure process. I mean, I don't know what it's like here, I know what it's in Illinois, you got 90 days of waiting and then, you know, so it doesn't, it's not like it happens overnight. In North Carolina, I believe it's quicker, so I will find out.
Okay.
Okay, and then purchase order policy, I wrote one, and this will be incorporated into our purchasing policies period, which I will take back from you. I think, unless you've worked on it. The purchasing policies that need to be redone, like others' ancients.
Yes.
You gave it to me, I give it back to you and I'll take it back. I'll get it. I'll find it, I'll get it.
I think this is it. I looked at this, and what I think I would like added to this is a little more detail on, the purchase order policy is good, but I think we need to preface this by the quoting policy. First of all, like, you know, when you get a quote, who does the quote? Or who can do the work, who can, basically, the guide of thresholds for what kind of quotes you get, based on the orders, who can do the job based on the dollar amount of a project. I think that needs to be part of this whole thing.
Well, that could be part of it, but I'd like this to go into effect right away anyway, so that we have fine purchase orders for anything over 500 bucks.
And this is a purchase order policy.
Purchase order.
You're getting more, more, it's like contracts and stuff like that, aren't you? I think the purchase order policies, again, smaller purchases, 500 dollars plus, and there should be a limit to it. I didn't see, is it 500 to 10,000, or 500 to 30,000?
There's thresholds for each.
Right, we set that threat.
No, the state.
Well, yeah, for contracting, but for purchase orders though. I think purchase order, we can.
Well, it is, it, well, she set it up in here as a 500 dollar, it has to be.
Minimum, right?
Maximum, without having a sign.
Without, without, yeah. But can a purchase order be for, what's the minimum for contracts, like 300,000, 350? About half a million, isn't it?
300.
Yeah, and you probably don't wanna do a purchase for a half a million dollars, but you would do a purchase order for maybe meters, 25,000 dollars of a meter or something like that, but maybe if you get up over 100,000, you may not want a purchase order. You may want either an informal or formal contract.
But I fill one out just to have it there.
No, you have to fill out a purchase order because we need.
You should be able to have.
Even if it's under 500 dollars, you still need to have a purchase order, because when those items come in and when that bill comes in, Shannon needs something to.
You gotta reference it.
Reference against.
I fill one out for everything.
It should be, we should have them filled out. It should be up, we should have them filled out.
That's, that's fine. Jody suggested a twenty-five hundred dollar limit. I said, no way. I mean, if you want it filled out for every purchase in advance of the purchase, that's fine by me.
But maybe it's just the approval process. And the other thing, too, is, is does it matter if it's, if you've got money in your line item? If you've got a budget for, let's say, if you've got a budget for, um, I don't know, let's take the police department for ammunition. They have a thousand dollar budget. He's buying ammo for seven hundred and fifty dollars. You don't need approval.
I would think that he could buy that without approval.
Well, it has to start with the finance officer first to be sure the funds are there.
Well, I think that's, uh, you know, here's the thing, and I have to look at my budget all the time.
But a lot of people don't look at their budget all the time.
Well, that's his job.
Yeah, that's your job, and that's something I'm sure everybody, I, I mean, I sit down with Shan- or Sharon, you used to, now it's Sha- uh, Shannon. There are things, if it's in your budget, why do I need to get your approval for it?
Well...
Or your approval. If it's in my budget to have it done, I don't need an approval for it because we've already approved it during our budget meeting.
That's fine. I sent it out, I'll send it out, I'll send it out to you guys for commenting. You need to comment on it.
You, you still, I think you still have to, you have to approve the purchase order.
Yeah.
Yes, but, but if, if we've already line itemed a budget item for this much money, and someone's going to spend that money, I think they can spend that money, you obviously have to say, yes, this is fine, but do you have to preemptively approve it?
Well, I have to pre-audit expenses.
Why?
Because it's a general statute.
Expenses for what, though?
No, she, what she has to do is she has to approve that...
Everything before we, technically before we pay it.
Correct, right, it, she's, she basically authorizes that there's money available for the purchase. I understand, that's what her job is.
What, the point you're making is if, if we've approved that budget item and there's the five thousand dollar budget item, you can, you should be able to spend that five thousand dollars for that item without the rest of us have to...
Well, we already approve a lot.
The council wouldn't get involved.
And you know what? That's what I'd like to talk to the accountant and the auditor, like that fine point. What is the, what is that fine point? If, if it's already budgeted, it's a line item on the budget, and someone is spending that money, and it's, it's been approved, Shannon... Right, right.
Right.
Shannon, Shannon says, yes, this money is still here, hasn't been spent yet, and so the department head, you know, is going to spend the money. Do you have to preemptively approve that? Or can they spend the money and you then say, yes, it's, it's a formality that you're saying, yes, the funds are available? Let's talk to the accountant or the auditor on that to see what the technical, um, because then, say there's something that needs to get purchased, or there's a deadline for a, a special offer perhaps, and you haven't approved a purchase order yet, so we missed the boat on something.
Right.
You know, because it can't be done until you sign it, and maybe you can't get in until Friday, or you're on vacation, or whatever.
It's just, I would ask you guys to do this. I'm gonna send this to, I've sent it to you with the advice and word. If you'd send me the comments back, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. And under that same guise, I just have one more on the, on the page, second page of the number six of payment verification. Very last item is the service completion report signed by the department head. I would just add, suggest we add that there should be a caveat to that. Should be, it should also have the signature of, of the person responsible for ordering that service or ordering that material.
Oh, definitely.
In most cases, it's only gonna need to be...
Well, it says packing slip signed and dated by receiving employee.
Yeah, yeah, right.
The service completion, signed by the department head, the last item on page two. Cause in the water department, if Jesse, cause he initiated that P O, I probably signed, you...
You signed it, yeah.
Well, when the invoice comes through, that should, the invoice should be paired up with the P O.
Yes.
And he should be signing that P O, that, that, not the P O, but the, uh...
It's the pa- it's more the packing slip that the material was received.
Right, received, right.
Right, and he should sign that this is received, it's in good, good order, and he submits it to bookkeeping.
And same thing, he should be reviewing.
But it has to be signed and dated.
Yeah, and he should review the invoice when it comes in. He's the person who originated the P O, originated the, the request for service or materials. They're closest, they know exactly. When the invoice comes through, if there's something omitted from the invoice, if there's a change during the, you know, by the time that the, the project was done, or not so much project, but when the item was received, it should be the person that originated it.
Yeah, you know, you're right.
So, it'd be Jesse or Chief Mike, uh, since those are the only, well, in case if Shannon would order something, she should sign that.
She does not order anything, no.
So, there would just be those two employees, but they should, they need to look at that invoice and prove that the work was completed as, as we wanted it done.
What item are you questioning?
Um, page two, service, and their payment verification, all the way to bottom, yeah, number three, the last, very last sentence, their last bullet item.
Budget verification?
Yep.
What?
Their service completion report.
I don't have service completion report.
Yeah.
Last one.
Oh, service completion report signed by department. I don't even know what a service completion report is.
Well, that'd be, I'm guessing when you get the P O and you get the invoice, you match them up and...
Yeah.
I would be interested.
It's not actually a report, it's the matching of the invoice to the P O.
Right. Check and double check.
Yeah, I would, I would...
Say probably invoice.
Jesse gets an invoice, he checks the, he actually checks, puts a check mark on it, or he signs it, or I take it into him and say, did you get this as a complete, before I put my, my signature on it?
All we have to do, this says packing slip signed and dated by receiving employee or department head. And the same thing, it should say copy of invoice, um, signed by employee.
For department head.
Or department head.
For department.
The person originated, originated the P O.
We have, we don't technically have a service completion report, but when you sign your approval on the invoice, you're saying it's done.
It's a done deal, yeah.
Yep.
And all I, all I'm suggesting is we, the person who originated that P O, that's the one that should, uh, make sure everything's in order. And then the department head, once he sees that on...
That's a good point.
Cause there could be something, an error in the invoice. I probably would catch it, but the person who ordered the work to be done.
Well, it's like any of my jobs. I can't have you looking at their invoices when they come in, because you don't know.
Right, yep. Okay.
Um, no.
Then we'll get, we'll mark this up and give you comments.
On, on the applicability on item number two, the only comment that I had there was, um, should we add council members? Cause council members, in our case, write a lot of purchase orders. I mean, and granted, we are department, village departments, but it...
Yeah, I think you're right.
We're village department. I mean, don't we cover everything by the department?
I would say, I would specifically, I would, yeah, I would instead, I, I would say council members and employees who request purchase orders.
Village department heads, well, it's...
Cause it, all it says is this applies to all village departments and employees who request the purchase of. I would just say it applies to all council members and employees.
But village department heads are council people, right?
Yeah, but I think it's not clear.
Department head.
But...
No, I know, I add council members.
Because a council member is different from a department head.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we are department heads, but we don't, I mean, s- some people might not consider themselves department heads.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
I, I think we should, I don't have any more council members.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't have a problem, yeah, I don't have a problem with the, with the, just putting the wording or terminology.
Cause everyone knows that they're a council member. Not everybody might connect the fact that they're a department head.
If you guys have anything else, why don't you just write it up, send it to me, and then we don't need to spend all the time on this.
Sounds good.
Oh, one last thing about purchase order number assignment. The P Os have numbers on it.
Right.
So, we don't need to assign numbers because they're signed already on the form.
Did you take that part out?
It's, um, oh, I don't know. Did you?
Yeah, I've sent this out a couple times.
Okay.
Yeah, we took that out.
All right. Yeah, I didn't see anything about it, sorry. Here's all my stuff on purchase orders.
Could you give that to me?
That's got the U, the school of government stuff in it there, too. Okay.
I also hope Jody will put this over, just so you know. That's all I have.
Okay. Hi, council member Norman.
Well, I just wanted to bring, uh, I, I know we don't have to do this now, but if you're doing it now, um, they are cleaning and crack filling the pickleball courts. Uh, started yesterday. They couldn't finish yesterday because their power washer wasn't working, so they had to rent one. And, uh, so they're there then today. Um, hopefully, it'll be ready by tomorrow. Uh, we are having, they did say, considering it's five years old, that it's in very good shape. And they've basically have said that most pickleball courts last about five years. So, we've taken good care of ours. Um, the one thing they did suggest, and you brought it up, too. Um, since they are cleaning the court, there is a solution that they can put over the court, like you did at the pole that one year, um, which will keep the dirt from sinking into the court itself and preserve the life of the court. So, if we can get maybe another three or four years out of that court, I asked them to give me a quote for how much that would cost.
Like a sealer?
Yeah.
It's a sealer. I think probably when they installed the courts, they probably did put a thin, no, they didn't.
No, I, I, I had nothing to do with that, right, and I'm not very happy with something.
Usually they put a thin coat on. This guy's my, what I just needed from you, just research, that's all.
But it is holding up very well, they said. And just off the top of their head, and I said, uh, in today's numbers, what would it cost to totally resurface this court? And, uh, they said about twenty thousand dollars.
Now, why, isn't it tar?
It's a composite, it's not a composite, or a composite.
Yeah, if you, if you have to redo the whole thing, it's about twenty thousand dollars. So, I, once I get that court, we'll discuss it, and I think, I didn't budget for it, obviously, but I think depending on what it is, we might wanna consider it. Because it is holding up well, except for the people who are writing their bikes on it, um, and writing on it. And, um, so, yeah, that's very frustrating.
Yeah, so, as long as we continue to do what you've been doing, maintain it.
Yeah.
It'll keep putting that twenty thousand dollar figure out in the future. So, the idea is to maintain it.
Have you got a camera up there yet, camera?
Yes. So, we'll figure out who's doing it.
Very good.
But you're probably gonna have to replace that in five years, probably.
Probably, we would do.
Maybe not.
In the pool reserve, we might wanna rename that recreational reserve and set aside money over the next couple of years, so that's already in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again...
As well as repairs at the park that may need, you know, other, other than the trails, but...
They were very surprised at how, how well it is. It has quite a few cracks in it.
It's gonna ruin all of it.
Yeah, well, the big cracks around the posts are gonna be a problem, and, and those are going to always be a problem. Um, there were some holes, little holes that they're filling. It's not gonna be the most attractive thing after they repair the cracks and everything. But you're not gonna be able to match the paint exactly, but, yeah, um, it, it's holding up, it's holding up.
Okay.
Any questions for Councilwoman Norman, moving on?
Okay.
Councilmember Morgan.
All right. Um, the reason the cross connection program's on the agenda this afternoon is because, uh, I'd like to get a, a cross connection ordinance in place, uh, and I, so, at our next council meeting, uh, we could vote on the, um, the draft of the, of the ordinance. But Lisa's gonna be gone, and there's, usually our attorney will review it at that time. Um, I sent everybody a, a packet of educational materials, and in that packet, there were, um, there is the, uh, the draft ordinance.
Is that the first document?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Can I, can I ask?
Sure.
Can this be watered down? Because it's a little tedious and...
It is tedious.
And people, we've gotta realize that we're, we're, you know, we want, we want people to read this, and people are not gonna read this. They're gonna part, they're probably gonna go through gates one and two and say, ugh, and, and just stop.
Well, we explain to the people who has to have it done.
Yeah.
And that, that's what they, that's what the other material is, yeah. This ordinance, the, uh, this draft ordinance, it's, um, taken from these seven fines, um, ordinance. Most of the ordinance are there, I think, for, for legal purposes and stuff like that. I mentioned the code, and it's a state statute. Let me just explain one thing, is that the homeowner, the resident, they're the responsible party. They're the one that has to have it.
Is it the homeowner or the resident?
The, the property owner.
Okay.
Property owner is the responsible party. They're the level party. If there, if a backflow condition occurs, they're the level party. The state, they're the ones that set down the statutes. All, we're just administrative. We're keeping track of, um, the back, the number of backflows out there, where they're at, the backflow preventer devices, where they're at. Um, we, um, have, also took, uh, we're responsible for the enforcement, making sure that, that the property owner that's required to have a backflow preventer by the state installs the backflow preventer. That that backflow preventer, it was, at one time, they were, the, the statute was that they would be tested annually. Now, it's, depending on the situation, if it's, uh, on the irrigation line, it's tested every three years now, rather than annually. There's a couple of applications. Um, in-ground sprinklers, the state statute's perfectly clear on that. And that is that if you have an in-ground sprinkler state, um, system, you do have a backflow preventer.
Can I ask you a quick question before I forget, since you're on there?
Yep.
So, we have new homes that were built that have in-ground sprinklers. Who has certified those?
The, the plumber that installed, the, the plumber that was approved, he's gotta be approved tester, has to have state approval. He, the, the procedure is that he goes in, installs the device, he sends us a copy of the test, and then we keep a copy of that test here. And annually, it's the, the property owner's responsibility to have it tested an- to test it annually. And again, send the results to us.
Annually or every three years?
In-ground sprinkler systems, every three year.
Well, what are the kind of sprinkler system?
Well, you could have a sprinkler system if you have a swimming pool, and your swimming pool has an auto fill to it. Or if you're, uh, that, that is gonna require an, an annual test, not, um, every three-year test. A commercial account, we have two commercial accounts. We have the Pro Shop, and we have the General Store. Those accounts, it's specified right in the state statutes, commercial accounts, restaurants, what they're considered, because they have to have a backflow preventer. So, and again, it's...
I don't know if you answered my question, though.
Okay.
So, a home went up, sprinkler system went in, does it matter who put the sprinkler system in?
It, the, the sprinklers...
Her question is, her question is, how do we know that a backflow preventer was, was installed with an irrigation?
It's also part of the, it's part of the, there's two, uh, when you read through the, the ordinance, it tells you that there's a state statute, which is administrative code, is also the state plumbing code. The state plumbing code says, these are the application that you built, so if you're a builder...
That, that was inspected and that will...
The county.
Before they get a...
C O.
C O.
Yes.
You, you're sure?
Um, I, I would, I can't tell you what the county does exactly, the procedures.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. How do we verify whether or not, even on the older ones?
Only by our own inspection. And what we did is last year, we sent off the C C Rs, we had a denim to, we had another sheet, if you recall. And, and in that, um, that second sheet that we had, we asked people, send us your test results for the backflow preventer. So, we're trying to get people to come forward, say, yes, I have a backflow preventer, it's a testable backflow preventer, here's the test results. The only thing we can do now is that we would have to go out and inventory them.
Knock, knock, hi. Do you have a back, that's basically what it's gonna say.
I think that's what we have to do.
We were actually, I'll tell you what, I was very surprised at the cooperation of, of the residents. We know all our irrigation lines. Some people have a separate irrigation line. We have seventeen of those. Besides your, um, domestic service line, some people requested a service line, a, a service line for their irrigation system. Very seldom happens anymore. I think people thought, well, they...
They changed the state law on that.
They changed the state law, and the fact that if you live in a municipality that has sanitary sewer, it makes sense to have an irrigation meter because you read your domestic meter, read the metin, and your irrigation meter subtracted, so you're not paying a sewer bill on water you've thrown on your lawn. That's the real crux of having an irrigation meter.
We don't have that issue.
No, our, in fact, our, there's a, part of the existing ordinance we have says you may request an irrigation meter if you want to be for your irrigation line. But we do not say you have to have it. You can request it, it's made, that's the language. I said, people read this, that's why, it doesn't, it's, it's a tough read, there's no doubt about it.
Maybe we can...
But we, what we can do, and whatever, many of the other communities do, um, they also put on their website a narrative. Just real quickly, and that's what I kind of included also in that packet that you had, and it just goes and says, okay, you have a... And it just goes and says, okay, if you have a property that has an underground sprinkler system, mandatory backflow preventer. The swimming pool directly connected or, or filled usually, because, and the other thing about the backflow.
Are you looking at one of the sheets?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's just one of the others, and like.
Black fire, cross, cross connection.
And this is really just kind of for your own, to educate us.
Can this very, very brief overview go on the very first page of our proposed ordinance?
Um, that would be something that our attorney would have to tell us.
Because I, I don't mind putting this on the website, but it would be really nice if, if something this simple was.
And the other thing would be on the website, a question and answer. Most, most of the communities, you have the, the legal stuff in your ordinance, and then you also, on your website, you have question and answers, you say specifically what applications require a backflow preventer. In fact, you know, what I'm finding is, when you talk to, um, just the common guy, like you said, how do you, you know, I just bought a house, I don't know what a backflow preventer is, I've got a brief video, it's gonna be two, two minutes, and it tells you why you need it. It's probably one of the best videos, the simplest one I've, I've come across. I got it to work. Actually, my, my assistant got it to work. Now, let me put this on, and hopefully this'll work. But it's, it's very clear.
Oh, no way! There it is.
One question frequently asked by Charleston Water System customers is what is backflow, and why do many who install a backflow preventer? Backflow is the reversal of normal water flow caused by a sudden change in water pressure. Backflow could contaminate the public water supply whenever a cross connection exists. A cross connection is a link between a potable water system and a non-potable water system. In this case, we're referring to the connection between Charleston Water's public water lines and our customers' private plumbing systems. Over the past few decades, there have been many documented examples nationwide where contamination of water through backflow has caused illnesses, burns, and even deaths. One simple example of a potential backflow hazard is your home's irrigation system. If the homeowner uses pesticides and fertilizers in water pools around one of the nozzles, during a loss of system pressure, pesticides and fertilizer could be sucked back down those lines. Then, when system pressure is regained, those pesticides and fertilizer could be introduced into other people's drinking water. But with the installation of a backflow preventer, potentially hazardous substances are prevented from entering your public water system. This is why Charleston Water System requires customers who have an irrigation system to install a backflow preventer and have it tested annually to make sure it's working. Industrial facilities and businesses whose operation presents a backflow hazard, such as car washes, dry cleaners, restaurants, and salons, are also required to install a backflow preventer. There are different types of devices designed for various degrees of hazard. Charleston Water System's Cross Connection Control Department works with customers to determine whether a backflow hazard exists, and if so, what type of backflow preventer is required. For more information and before installing a backflow preventer, be sure to review the installation requirements listed on our website, or contact our Cross Connection Control Department.
And I guess, this, this afternoon, that's one of the, the purpose of this, again, we want to get the ordinance in place. We've already started an inventory of the backflow devices that are out in our system, and I, so I was quite surprised that how many, uh, the residents have come forward with the information. So, we're, and I guess we want to focus on, and, and first, again, is to get the irrigation systems, because that's the one, the state statute. If you, when you read the state statute, that's what they mention. They mention commercials. The next one, again, probably the next thing we'll look at, are the swimming pools. A swimming pool, if it's a standalone pool out there, in-ground, as long as there's an air gap. If, um, if they fill the pool from the domestic service, and maybe they have a little pipe coming up, and the water falls down into the pools. No different than in your sink in your house. There's an air gap there. And that's why, you know, it's a natural way to have a, a backflow preventer, an air gap. And so, on a swimming pool, if you're filling it from a, a fixed piping that allows the water to flow in to the pool, there's an air gap there, that's not a, that's not a backflow condition, because you can't suck it back in. But with the, and if I have a, an auto fill valve, well, then it's connected directly to their, their domestic service line. So, that's a backflow, that's definitely a cross connection. That requires, the thing about a swimming pool is, a lot of people, they fill their pool with a hose, if they have to replenish it. So, they take the hose, and it's fine if it's sitting up on the deck, and it doesn't go into the water. But when the end of that hose goes into the water, we have a main break, we shut down the line out, for some reason, another part of the system, or someone opens a hydrant out there. The pressure drops on our system, depending on the elevation where that pool's at, you know, and other factors, it'll suck the water out of the swimming pool, under certain conditions.
So, who checks that now on pools? Does Jesse go to every pool?
No.
And he should go to every pool.
And so, for, we're, we're a small, small water company. And for him to do that, uh, we can take a cursory view of them. Um, when the pool was installed, the contractor, that they installed an auto fill, he, he had to, by state statute, install a backflow preventer. We probably have that in our records. If someone has a pool installed later on, and it's a standalone pool, and there's, you know, it's not connected to our system, uh, there probably is some type of backflow preventer, uh, on the filtration system, or even on the, um, and, um, but there is that, there is an opportunity, if someone takes a hose, they fill, refill the pool with, replenish the pool, and they submerge the end of it. And that becomes a backflow condition, a cross connection. That's where the village, that we do have the, in the ordinance, we have the option to say, okay, this has been a recurring problem with a particular resident, or just.
Well, how do you know who caused the backflow?
Oh, you'll know.
How?
Because people in that direct area get sick depending if you're drinking pool water.
Yeah, but if there's like, everybody, if you've got five people on the street with a pool, how do you know? Who, who did it?
Again, that'd be kind of forensic stuff, and to go back. Uh, but there are, there are ways that, they, they've tracked it in other systems when there's a backflow. Normally, you can find out, um.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
When?
This is good. This is what we wanted. We want this dialogue. So, I want a lot of questions, because that's.
Lisa gets a permit, or gets a request for a permit for a new pool, okay?
They go to the county.
They go to the county, blah, 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 the pool's done.
County says they need a backflow preventer, this inspector comes out and sees if it's there.
Okay. So, the county makes sure on any new pool, that, that, that flow preventer is there, is that correct?
I'm not head, I'm not head of that department for the county. I can't tell you for sure if they do this.
Okay, but maybe we should ask that question.
I think it has been asked, and it's.
So, let's pretend it hasn't been asked.
Okay.
All right, so we know there's a new pool going.
Right.
Jesse can get a list of new pools that have gone in.
He can do that.
And go and check it. Now.
And we do, and that's part of the ordinance. We do have the right to enter your premises.
Okay, then, that's, that's a problem. Then, that shouldn't be an issue.
Right.
I, I know you're saying, you know.
Well, because he drives around to.
Exactly. So, here's a house, I can go check to see if that happened. I don't think it's as difficult as we want to make it.
Well, they're pretty visible. I mean, they're, they're like this high in the lawn.
So, once he identifies, yes, they have one, great, sounds good. No, then, then this is what we need to do.
And that's with the council. But the, the applications that are clear cut, where the state statute says in-ground irrigation, a swimming pool that has auto fill lines connected, any commercial account.
Right.
Those are cut and dry.
Yeah.
The all, ordinance also says, when you, when you read through it, is the water purveyor has, we, if we, if there's a potential cross connection, we do have the right to go out to your property and track it. And we can also go out and be signed, and we can demand that you have.
Correct.
A backflow on.
All right, so, let's, let's put a policy in place that says this is what, what we're gonna do, and follow through, and what the penalty is if you don't do it.
As, as devil advocate, I, personally, I think if you have a swimming pool, you should have a backflow preventer.
I mean.
To protect the water system. The state statute does not say that, okay? We can have an ordinance that says it, you know? Um, but as the, again, as, as a devil advocate, if I have a swimming pool, and I'm telling you, my swimming pool is standalone. You know, if I, if I want to replenish it, I stand there, I hold the garden hose, or I have a little tripod, and I set the garden hose on the tripod, and the water comes out the hose and falls into the swimming pool. That's legal. Now, you're, as the water purveyor, you sent your man out, right? And maybe that day I had it on the tripod, but maybe another day I got lazy and I just, like, like, it's like.
I think it should just be man.
Another example, like, another example, when you have your law, you're aware of one example, we, we have a backflow preventer on the filter of our swimming pool. Community plan now, because one of the reasons we have it there is because, yes, they're supposed to, when we replenish our pool, they would take that hose, and yeah, sometimes it'll be a bubble water level, other than I think we submit.
Let's just make an ordinance that says, we have the permission to go and look at the pool, and if you have a standalone, you have to have it. If you don't have it, here's the penalty, and so, and so, that's what we need. Yes, we have an ordinance that says you have to have it.
I think, I think if it's at all legally possible for us to say, if you have a swimming pool, you must have a backflow preventer.
Period.
Period, yeah. That's the end of that. And if, and if we can legally do that, and I guess we have to, we have to.
We have to look at each situation, because if they, if they have an air gap. If they have an air gap, so they have.
Well, if they have it built into the pool where it's got a pipe that comes out.
Right. And there's an air gap, and the water flows out of the, out of the pipe, and falls to the pool.
That's different.
That's legal.
Right, that's different. But if they don't have that, I would say that if, and if it isn't a legal thing to do, I think we should talk to McGinnis and, and Jackson and say, we would like a, a special, a local ordinance or local law saying that we do.
And, and that's what the, the ordinance has been drafted up. That's what's in there. That does give the, the water purveyor does have the ability to say, if there is a potential cross connection there, we require.
All right, so that's fine. We all agree, we all agree that that's.
So, that's there.
But you need to be aware of it, because if you're questioned about it, um.
It's already in there.
It's in there.
Okay, okay. Mary, you had a question?
Warren.
Go ahead.
Well, hold on, Mary had a question.
Well, we're kind of, I mean, we're going at it kind of piecemeal, and I wonder, this list you have that says, Foxfire Village Cross Connection Program, where it says the village requires testable backflow, if you look in the ordinance, we have something now about cross connections, but one of the things we can do is take this and insert it into the current ordinance. And then, it would make sense to me that then you delineate each situation in which you're telling them they have to have a backflow preventer with detail on every single.
That's what I said, that's what I said. Can we just stick this on page one?
Yeah.
You know.
And the ordinance, yeah, I think it's only a couple of sentences, and it just, it really just gives us.
Well, here, here it just says that you don't want cross connections, and only men, it only mentions private wells. So, we just need to update, I'm looking at it, it's section eighteen point five.
Well, no, he, he wants to add this whole, this whole thing, like, get rid of that, and put this whole program in our ordinance.
Right, the ordinance will be a summer cut. Yeah, it will be included as an addendum to eighteen, to that section of eighteen. I think that's how, probably our attorney will want to put it in.
That's fine, okay. Let's, let's, let's all read through this and make sure we, if there's any way it can be simplified, Warren.
Okay.
I think it would be of great benefit.
Been there for the legalese, so that we do have the, gives us the right to go onto a property and say, okay, it's been, it, it, the, we've evaluated it, and there's a potential, it's there, and we're, we're asking, we're not, we're requiring a backflow. Like I said, the state statute just takes, you know, it has to be, the way the state statute reads it, has to be a cross connection situation there.
Warren.
Okay.
And that's why, go ahead.
Any licensed plumber in the state can install?
No, no. You have to be a certified tester.
Tester.
Certified tester.
Not necessarily a plumber, just a tester.
No, no. Cannot just be a plumber with a plumber's license, it has to be a certified tester. And today, I guess, the reason it was brought to the work session, again, is because your questions are good, because it's a way to educate the public. No one wants to be responsible, you know, take the responsibility of, if something should happen to their neighbor. And I think it, you know, most people are gonna do the right thing, you know, I'm pretty optimistic about it. I was very surprised, like I said, just because.
How many do we have right now?
Uh, we've got almost twenty.
No, I meant, how many tests, how many, how many backflow tests did Jesse get back?
Twenty.
Oh, just twenty?
Twenty. And we.
Well, there's gotta be hundreds of sprinklers.
No, no, no.
Really?
No. Um, in-ground sprinklers?
Yeah.
Most people drive their sprinklers around.
No.
We do have, um, probably some of the older homes.
Have you been on the east side?
But you have to be care, again, I don't mean with money to the water. A lot of the in-ground sprinkler systems are off of private wells.
That's true.
And a private well.
Not on the east side. I'm talking about the east side, well, all these new homes, and you, and I drive by these all the time. There are so many underground irrigation systems, and I guarantee you, they don't have private wells.
Well, we could check that out.
Wooden circle is nowhere else.
What?
At Wooden Circle, those new houses, there's nowhere else.
Exactly, that's my point, yeah. Okay, all right.
But anyways, we, we figured there's, we, we've got probably, like, this from the, um, from the notice going out, and people haven't sent any of them in, so we've got, you know, twenty of them out of, I think there, I would say.
Hundred.
No.
Yes. Yes, on the east side, yes. Yes, all these new homes.
No, I'm not gonna, we can't, we're gonna go back and forth on this, but I did talk to Jesse, and we do have a, we've got a field that's probably only about forty to fifty. So, we're almost halfway there.
So, we're saying forty to fifty irrigation systems plus pools?
No.
No, that would, that would include it.
I, I, I.
We only have.
No, that's what I mean, irrigation system plus pools.
A lot of the, uh, in-ground irrigation, there's, there's seventeen in-ground irrigation systems that have separate meters. And those we, we were aware about, and those we do have the, the documentation on.
Okay, anyway.
But yeah, we, we can do a little more research on that, like, so our whole thing is to, um, they, the council, prior councils have, this is, this is nothing new.
No, this is on, this is on.
You can go back ten, probably back to, like, ten, fifteen years ago, and they started this, and along the way, um, the law has changed. Um, I don't even know the specifics, but, um, the, um, it's just taken a while for, we've got a little catching up to do, let me say that way.
Okay.
Because the, the, but, uh, I think this will get us there, approval of the ordinance, and hopefully, at the, um, when Lisa gets back, we'll go through it with her and the attorney, and then at the first, um, council meeting that we have, that we can bring it forward to, I'd like to vote on that. That way, we have the.
Okay, but, did you take this, you said, from Southern Pines?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And you, if you look at the norms, all, uh, they're generic, they're all just about the same. Everybody or a community here has.
Well, somebody finds a good one, pop, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and the, um.
Cut and paste.
Some of the other communities, what they've done is, on the website, they list the specific application, make it, makes it pretty clear. So, I would.
Okay.
I would suggest that, yeah, if you have any questions, just Google backflow in Moore County, and you'll get the, you'll see the, all the communities have it as part of their websites today.
Okay. So, I mean, I like the, the frequently asked, I mean, the frequently asked questions and all that, that, I mean, that can go in our website, you know, I don't see a problem with that. And, I mean, the rest of this stuff is more, you have a notice to residents.
Well, there, I mean, as I read through this, there are some things, like, we have the village administrator in there, reviewing building plans and inspecting plumbing as it's installed. I don't see the village administrator inspecting plumbing. I don't. And then, we've also got some stuff, um, under the consumer, on, I just, like, on number four, the new owners immediately subject to all the requirements of this section, if a backflow device changes ownership, that means we need to notify people. I guess when, I don't know how we're gonna, that kind of stuff can get a little tedious.
Right.
Well, and I think perhaps when we're sending out our CCR report.
Right.
Which is an annual report, that's when we're gonna have to inform people of things like this.
Right. And that's a, that's a good vehicle to do it, and we've done it the last two years, the last two CCR reports. I'll tell you what, I'd really appreciate it, if you go through the, the ordinance, the draft ordinance, and if you have any comments, John, you know, John. I'll tell you what, I'd really appreciate it if you go through the, the ordinance, the draft ordinance, and if you have any comments, jot, you know, jot them down, forward them on to me, and I will, if, if, if it-
If it can be mine-
We can all cooperate, and Mary-
Yeah, there are, there's a lot of stuff in here.
There's just a lot of stuff in there. I mean, I've read a lot of ordinances, and I was going through this, I was like, whoa, I mean, the average person is not-
That's what I said.
There is not, I mean, and I'm not saying we need to dumb it down, I'm not saying that negatively, but people just are not gonna read through all that.
Yeah, and that's why you have, that's why you want information on the website, you know.
But even at that-
Do it the most.
Well, I think the thing is, is that if there's things that need to be in here for legal purposes, that's fine.
Right.
But if there's things that is just a lot of verbiage that we don't need, maybe we can, maybe we can change it so it's a little easier to-
And I have taken a lot of that out. Most of the ordinances that you, that are out there, they actually have a whole section on definitions. Pages of definitions, what a device is, which I-
To have some simple definitions. And you did that, didn't you?
Uh, yes, I did.
Yeah, no, I think that, no, I think that's very important.
So it does make it a little bit easier.
That was one of my comments, I was going, we need definitions.
Yeah, this isn't verbatim, the, the Southern Pines, or, um, you know, a couple of the other water purveyors that, you know, in the area. This isn't verbatim, I've gone through and kind of tweaked it for us, um, but there's certain things that have to be in there. But like I said, mark it up, send me a hard copy or electronic, however you, however you want to do it. Lisa has the, um, electronic copy of this, but yeah, mark it up, and, uh, we've got some time. Because I don't, we'll have it for the next council meeting for a vote, so we can go through it, but I think the main purpose tonight is to, like, educate us a little bit here, and hopefully, some residents will watch this and, uh-
Well, this is our-
Educate them too.
This is our homework assignment, yeah? Okay, thanks.
So, okay, Warren, do you recall in their UDO where you found it?
My what?
Do you recall in Southern Pines' UDO where you found it?
I went to the municipal code section.
Okay.
Just go to municipal code. In fact, that's, uh, I, I just downloaded off of that and I started tweaking it. You'll find, you can, uh, just about all the municipalities around us.
So when you get to, like, item five, item six, item seven, I'm assuming these are just documents?
Yeah, this, this is just education.
It's more education.
Yeah, this is more education, you know, there's, um, you know, the, through a couple examples of letters that we'll want to send out to our two commercial accounts, um, the old ordinance is in there, the, um-
Yes, I see that.
Uh, section eighteen of the old ordinance is in there. There's just, um, there is a, a section in there about the, uh, county planning inspection. There's a little note that, that, yeah, that, yes, yes. And, and Janet, if you just review that section on your own, I think you'll, you'll see where there is a little, I use the word ambiguity, between the inspections and them saying, yes, you need a backflow preventer, we're not gonna give you the occupancy permit, do you have it? And when they come out and do the inspection, but, uh, certain cases maybe-
But see, the village has final say in occupancy permits. So that was my question, is how do we know, or how are we informed that this has been done?
Before we, yeah.
Before we give the occupancy permit.
When we go out to check the property for everything else, we need to check it.
Okay, who's doing the checking? That's another question.
The person that's been doing it all along.
Has a fact sheet on it. Southern Pines has a page that's frequently asked questions, and that would be good for us to be careful.
Okay, there is, but, but again, we don't have someone that goes out physically, that's the problem.
What we need to do is we need to, let's, let's read this the way it is, and then let's figure out how we want to-
Implement.
Implement and manage, and manage new systems, and get a, a real list in the water department of all the backflow, uh, backflow devices that exist.
And we do have, yes.
Or the ones that should exist and don't.
Right.
Right.
Because I'm sure, knowing what I, anything I've researched that goes back any amount of years is not what you think. It's not, whatever you're expecting is probably not exactly what happened.
And, uh-
Okay.
Going back to, to you, I think the years before we grew so rapidly, I do think it was probably the, I, I do not know who went out and approved the last inspection before they issued the occupancy. I would assume it was probably the staff that was here at the time. We had a very, very small staff at the time.
I mean, there was like five homes in a year being built.
Right, and so I would, I would venture a guess that probably Lisa probably went out and just said, here's the list of things I'm looking at. I'm assuming that.
Yeah, well, let's pretend we need somebody to do that now.
Yeah, when you have, you know.
We need to have somebody.
Twenty thirty, yeah, you're right.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know who does that right now.
I think we, we don't have anybody, that's the problem. All right, well, okay, next, sorry.
Didn't mean to open that part. Ken Warren's open.
Well, we need to, we need to figure out how we're going to manage this system.
I agree with you.
And that's, that's the real bottom line here, and we will figure that out, yeah? Okay, okay.
That's all I have for this evening.
That's a lot of work, Warren.
Well-
Thank you. Good job, thank you. Trying to keep us-
In the making for quite a while.
Keep us on our toes.
Yeah, I don't know if we recall or not, but a lot of which you see in that packet, some of the draft, that was probably last year, about now.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so if you read through some of the stuff, it looks familiar, you, you probably saw a copy of it last year. It's, so, that's all I have.
That's it? Okay, um, next, we're moving on. There's no more questions, okay? We are moving on to public comments, and this would be for items that were listed on the agenda only. And if there are any public comments, I just want to remind, uh, the public that this is not an opportunity to engage in conversation, it's an opportunity to voice your questions or concerns. And we will take your questions and concerns under advisement and address them as needed. Um, if I can clarify something factually through a quick statement, I will. So, does anyone have any public comments?
All net for nothing.
Well, if anyone's listening, it's just, I promised I would remind people, so. Okay, okay, um, that being, there's no public comment, um. That being said, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm motion to adjourn.
Second, it's by forty-eight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.